...at seven oh five. Can we please stand in the bleachers?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moment of silence. Thank you. If I have a motion, approve the minutes of June seventh. Please.
Turn on.
I see seconded by Diane. Any revisions, corrections?
Um. I had just a spelling thing. Uh, page three. Twenty two. Well, in this, uh, the first paragraph below the superintendent's report. Third line. Butler stated that they posted the telephone issue everywhere. They could thing versus think. Think the thing needs to be changed to think. That's the only one that jumped out at me.
All right, any old questions? I'm sorry. Am I right? All in favor of the motion? That passes unanimously. Thank you. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, seven zero zero. Excuse absences. Oh, Hank Boyle has an excuse absence as well as Peggy Zola and, uh, Ms. Peretta. I'm trying to think of each other board members who are here tonight. Hank, Hank has a excuse absence as well. Sorry. There we go. All righty. Correspondence folder. I'm gonna send it around. Um, there's a thank you letter that was sent to Ms. Peretta for her involvement as the teacher rep from the high school here at, uh, the school board. She was not able to be here tonight to receive her award, so we'll try to schedule it for one of the first meetings in September, um, and try to give her her plaque on that. But in the meantime, we certainly thank her for her involvement and her participation, and we look forward to seeing, uh, her successor. There was also another letter for our scholarships that we signed off on, just, uh, from the trustee of the trust fund saying the discretion that he made. Anybody else? Uh, combinations, good news. Now, the school year is here. Did you know? School year end is here.
Um, I had the pleasure of attending a faculty meeting at, um, Mountain View and giving, um, Mary her, uh, bill on her retirement and, uh, was able to thank the teachers for a nice year. Um, and I also had the, um, great pleasure to go to a get together for the high school teachers, um, and a retirement for, um, Maddie Edman at, uh, Frank's. And I, I thought that was really very nice and it was nice to see all the teachers and the faculty administrators together.
Forty-three years, yes. Nineteen sixty-seven.
Forty-three days. With perfect attendance, which is like forty-three years of perfect attendance.
We'll have a call then, sir. She might have been passed out in the back of the kitchen, but she was here. Anybody else? Actually, I have a few things from Peggy Zola. I didn't realize it was this long. I was looking at it saying, oh, here's everything. Um, I'm gonna try to run through it real quick and then spread out one thing. On May twenty-seventh, Bartlett Elementary School hosted our Ready to Learn Night. Families of incoming first graders, parents were given the opportunity to learn about our school and programs while our new first graders had a tour of the school and participated in some fun activities. The turnout was excellent with forty of fifty registered families attending. On June ninth, Bartlett held its first field day. In the morning, students enjoyed numerous games, races, and other activities. Every student was then treated to a free pizza lunch funded by the Bartlett PTA. After lunch, each student was placed either first, second, or third for their grade level and received a ribbon. Students were also given participation ribbons. The day was a tremendous success and was enjoyed by everyone. Special thanks to Holly Tate, who organized the event. Because of conflictations with field trips and what the music staff needed to be at other schools, Bartlett had to postpone a Memorial Day program. Instead, we held a patriotic celebration on Monday, June fourteenth. Each class sang patriotic songs and there was a performance by the Strings Group. The fourth grade farewell, um, I believe it's a ceremony, was held on Wednesday, June sixteenth, in the Bartlett Elementary School gym. The farewell is a chance for us to say goodbye to the fourth graders before they leave for the fifth grade at Mountain View Middle School. During the farewell, fourth grade members of the student council read their essays on Bartlett memories. The students sang songs, played the recorders, and the strings, the students performed. The evening ended with a slideshow highlighting the students' years at Bartlett. Yeah, the last one. Bartlett Elementary School was awarded a grant through the Walker Fund for sixty-six hundred dollars to develop an after-school reading and tutorial club for the two thousand ten, two thousand eleven school year. This activity will help improve our students' achievement in reading by providing assistance for students who need help and for reading enrichment activities. We appreciate the support from the Walker Fund with the New Hampshire Charitable Foundations. I think that is it for Bartlett and, uh, Maple Lab and Glen Lake. All righty. We will jump right on to public comments. Before we go to public comments, I noticed a lot of people here today for public comments, and I'm just gonna run down a few things on public comments so they know. Um, you need to announce your name before you speak. We tr- ask you to try to keep it under two minutes. Um, it's not a question and answer, but board members may ask questions of you to try to better understand what you're sharing. Uh, it's certainly okay to mention your own child by name, but you cannot waive the privacy of another child, so please don't mention names of other children in our school district. Um, and derogatory comments and foul language will cause you to forfeit your public comment. It's been a while since I've rained down the quick explanations of it. There it is again, and we'll jump right into public comment. Anybody have any public comment?
Hi. My name is, um, Francesca Hansen. I am the parent of a fourth grader, or going to be a fourth grader. And I came here tonight to ask the board if they can give me some insight as to why we are reducing the number of classes from six third grades down to five fourth grades next year, which will cause our class sizes to rise to twenty-seven to twenty-eight students per class, when I believe there is a surplus in our budget of six hundred thousand dollars that we could possibly use towards the purchase of a portable and funding another teacher.
Um, actually, the, the surplus of six hundred and ten thousand, we cannot use that to pay in advance salaries and everything. That would be against the state laws. Um, that six hundred and ten thousand, if it's not encumbered and being used in this fiscal year, must be returned to the taxpayers. So that money is actually not available to help employ staff next year. And I believe the cutbacks in our budget in order to meet, uh, the number that was voted in in March has caused us to have to make some staff reductions. And I believe that's why there was elimination of one position.
Yeah, actually, if I can, Maple Lab, we didn't reduce it because we, we maintained all the positions. We didn't reduce one, but we, we have one less. And some of that conversation did happen in the beginning of the year, knowing our numbers were very high. Um, and continuing to watch those numbers, one of the things we did as a bo- at, what the board did, um, on my recommendation was we have several students from Maple and Bartlett who have switched, and we put a moratorium on holding that while we watched the numbers in both buildings, um, to make sure. We don't have, uh, for fourth graders coming from Bartlett to Maple. Um, we do know that the numbers are high. We are continuing to watch them. It, actually, in both buildings at the elementary level, the downside is the space. Um, and going into it, we have five, six grade classes right now and six of the rest, um, knowing that it was a larger class. Um, but we just don't have the space. Um, we actually talked about it, but we just don't have an available classroom at Maple Lab or Bartlett to even shift kids around.
So knowing that right now, we also have six, this, this coming year, there'll also be six third grades, we could possibly run into this problem in the future. What, what is going to be done? What plans are being made by the district to address that?
We actually, um, and we invite any public comment, but we, um, are actually, as an elementary, um, committee, looking at our elementary facilities and we'll be looking at proposing a bond at some point in the near future for additional classroom space. That is on the table. Um, we've actually met over the last year as a committee to look at, um, the proposals at both, uh, Glen Lake for an additional elementary school and redistricting. We looked at all of the different options. Um, and if you contact me, I'm certainly more than willing to give you the PowerPoint presentation we did to the board on kind of all of the different options. Um, and we landed with looking at a renovation and addition project at Bartlett and at Maple. So the, the voters passed us to use, um, funds, um,
For engineering designs.
For engineering, uh, what's the funds?
Impact fees.
Impact fees to do the engineering and architectural studies for those. Um, so we'll be doing that over the next year, um, to look at an addition. And I believe at Maple Lab, it's likely between an eight and ten classroom addition to be able to support those larger class sizes to bring them down.
Yeah, but that won't happen until two thousand thirteen, at the earliest.
Yeah. Yep.
Really?
Yep.
Yeah.
Because of the process and it has to go to the voters to be approved and everything, yeah.
But it is in the works.
It will take that many years to go through.
Yeah.
And it never gets voted the first time.
Yeah.
And part of it is also, you know, we looked at what our budget can support, and in the end, coming in the year two thousand twelve, thirteen, our bond on the middle school building is actually expiring. So then we could possibly afford, if the taxpayers allow us, to take out another bond in order to make additions at the elementary school and it won't have a real spike effect on the tax rate.
So we, we are aware of that and we are trying to proactively plan. Unfortunately, it leads to a building project, so, um, we are always looking for parent input and parent help and support because we will need that as we continue to move forward in that process, um, to get people to understand that this is a need.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Donna?
Donna Pinnard, sixty-five Ridgeway Park Road. Um, you may have heard recently that the Manchester School District has decided to have a dress code policy for their students. Um, we have one, and I would request that if we're not going to enforce it, that we actually take it off the books because kids who actually follow the dress code or who have a problem with how other students are dressing, look to teachers to enforce it. And if there's no enforcement of the dress code, it would be easier for us who are in the middle to just say, well, there is no dress code, therefore, you know, it's not happening. Um, as a teacher, I would recommend that we take it off unless, of course, we go to merit pay, and then I would ask the feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All righty, seeing none, can you?
Just ask a clarifier, a fun question, if I could, just to hear the concern.
Sure. Yes, you may.
And I know we can't use any funds to pay for payroll. Do we have no options with this money going back? We have, I, I know we can't sequester the funds for payroll for next year. Is there, have we looked at every option to handle the space size for next year? I know we can buy a portable.
You would need to do that by the end of this month.
Yeah, go ahead.
We experience, so that you know, this is not a problem that is unique. It occurs periodically. Um, understanding and being able to predict when you're gonna have a spike, um, sometimes can happen because we've had it all the way through and there'll be a bubble. There was a bubble here for three years in which all of a sudden our class size burgeoning at the high school from something around three hundred to around three fifty, which is significant. One of the things that we need to think about and that voters also need to think about when improving budgets is, how long is the bubble gonna last? And, um, how long are we going to need somebody in order to deal with bubbles like that? Um, and somehow you have to find balance between the commitment to employ a staff member um, and how long that bubble's gonna last because once that person has been here, um, then we have to deal with when the need doesn't exist anymore, when the bubble has evaporated. Um, it's not easy. Um, these aren't decisions that we take lightly. As you know, the board has, um, taken a position on what it would like class sizes to be. We'd like that to be an absolute. It's a balancing act, and more than anything, that's for your information. And it's not that we aren't mindful of these, that these things occur. The question is, is how we deal with it. And buying a portable and employing a staff member for some either shorter or longer period of time has consequences. We do invite feedback. We do invite input. I like your suggestions. I'm not sure that on balance that they take care of both short and long-term needs. Uh, and so the challenge to the staff and to the administration is to look for creative solutions. Uh, and I can't imagine that won't continue.
And I'm also gonna encourage you to try to stay, um, later on in the meeting, we're actually gonna have an update on what the budget committee would like to see us do with our budget next year. Um, so I'd like you to hopefully stay and listen to that because it certainly will affect our ability to do things like this.
Trevor Fox, one sixty-one Heather Hill Lane. Um, I guess just so I better understand, is there, with the classroom size that currently exists, is there a way for some of the funds to be used for additional teacher support?
No.
You can't prepay any salaries out of the money that's going back, no.
But at the same time, you could do a bubble with an additional staff member?
No.
Okay.
No. We could, we could make a purchase of something this year, but we could not encumber it for payroll or anything like that next year.
You helped clarify that? Yeah. No, I'm talking about this year.
Need for?
The school year coming up. You're saying that next year.
Yeah, I, why don't you say, our fiscal year starts July first, and that's where we're under our new operating budget. So come June thirtieth, we have to close out our books, take several weeks for the exact number, and then we have to report what we had left over. Um, under the current IRS, they will, if the selectments can actually carry a reserve fund on excess money collected, we cannot do that. Um, and most of our, our reserve fund balance that will be given back is because our revenue side was greater than we anticipated, such as, um, state aid, uh, tuition from Dunbar and New Boston, as well as some other cost savings that we, uh, saw. Probably from like the price of oil went down for us since the previous year because we're actually making our budget, come September, we're making our budget for the year two thousand eleven and twelve, uh, two thousand eleven, twelve. So we're doing almost eighteen months in advance our budget work. Um, and then the budget committee gets to make their say on it, bring it to the public, uh, hearing, the budget hearing. And the number from there then moves forward to the deliberative session where people can raise it or lower it, and then it finally goes to the ballot. But, yeah, there is strict limitations on how we can spend our unreserved fund balance, what we can use it on at the end of the year. And unfortunately, paying up salary or anything like that is not allowed on it.
So is there then any exploration on how to maybe use the funding to, I guess, address the current classroom size or support it as far as with the students? Has that been looked into?
You mean what we did this year?
Well, with the funding that's available, is there anything that can be done to support the current classroom size that exists?
Um, I don't think we, I don't think there is.
We can't pay salaries, and I, I see that as the big, I mean, could we buy a portable? I, I don't know that in six days we can spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to buy a portable and get the concrete in and get it all wired and hooked up in six days. But we still don't have the money to pay for a teacher. So you may be able to get the, the place in. We'd have to figure out where to put that, but we wouldn't have, but we don't have the money unless we cut something out of, else out of the budget to get the teacher to be in that classroom. Um, and that's kind of the piece we've struggled with, which is, um, without a teacher, without a space, we don't have a teacher. Without a teacher, we could have space. It's kind of that catch twenty-two.
And you have to remember, we are operating for this year and the previous year, we're operating on a budget that is below our default budget. The voters voted in a budget below our default budget. So we've had to make significant cuts in what we call our discretionary lines, and the discretionary lines are not that big. Most of our budget is salary, um, and benefits. That's a primary part of our budget, so. And we did make some cuts in staffing this year in order to meet the budget that was voted in previous year, which was a below default budget. Francesca, Francesca, right?
Francesca, yeah. Being, um, a school that has been identified as a school of need improvement, do you receive ARA funds?
Yes.
And can you use those ARA funds to fund a position?
No. The, the ARA funds that we received, we received some for Title One, um, which are exclusively for Title One students. Um, and we actually hired two, uh, reading special, we hired a math and a reading special, one at Bartlett and one at Maple Lab. Those are one, were one-year positions. That's what we had the funding for. Um, the other was, is the special ed side of the money, um, and we use that. We did have some discretionary money, a portion of that we were able to use for regular education, and we actually, that's about three hundred thousand of that is what we're using to buy our core, our new core reading program.
Right.
Um, and so that's where that discretionary kind of regular ed money went to. The rest were to support programs in, in special ed.
And that's, that's what you did with this year? Will you be getting?
No, that's it.
That's it.
Yeah, they actually, I, I know it's misleading. They actually talked about spreading out over two years.
Right.
But they pretty much pushed us to spend the money now in order to jumpstart the economy. So I think we're actually given a deadline that we had to expend it by the end of November.
But you have to have it, um, August thirty-first.
August thirty-first.
August thirty-first. Everything had to be expended or you lose it.
And certainly, if, if we get more money, we absolutely would look at things like that, but at this point, I'm not hearing that they're doing much more for education at this point, um, other than the race to the top grants, which the state has applied for. And that may offer some opportunities, but.
All righty, we'll move right on to, uh, standing committee reports. We're gonna try to go through this quickly because we actually have two presentations this evening. So admin and finance. Sue, you're taking care of that tonight?
Yes, I am. I would make a motion that the board approve the manifest of two million, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred eighty-one dollars and ninety-three cents. And yes, it's probably our biggest manifest of the year, but it's the end of the year.
And you also have all the salary pays.
All the balloon payments are in there.
Some are.
So salaries alone is a million, six hundred ninety-two thousand. Taxes and benefits, five hundred fifty-six thousand. Uh, regular ed, Gostown truck, ninety-five thousand. Special ed, Gostown truck, fifty-three thousand. Uh, sped buses from Safeway, six thousand. Uh, phone system hardware is sixteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Education reading tax with ARAMoney, what we just talked about. The first bills are coming in, a hundred thousand, a hundred and eighty dollars. Uh, more ARAM funding for the security cameras and hardware, I believe, at, um, Mount, is this strictly Mountain View?
Mountain View, Mountain View, and I think a couple of high schools.
And the high school, yeah.
And the high school, right. Okay. One, uh, one is seventeen thousand four, the other is eleven thousand four. Our generator that was such a problem at Mountain View has been repaired at a cost of fifty-nine hundred dollars with insurance reimbursement of five thousand, so that was not anywhere near as bad as we might have had to pony up. Uh, driver's ed funds that are flowing through this district, six thousand, and Lions Club field rental, five thousand dollars.
Okay. Anybody, um, you made a motion. Can I have a second with that motion, please, by Philip?
Cool.
Anybody have any questions on that? All right, all in favor of the motion? And that passes unanimously, seven zero zero. Anything else else on the agenda?
Uh, we have a presentation tonight. I'm sorry, I think, did we do anything much exciting?
Um, no, we reviewed the New Morning School.
Yeah, we did, uh, there were questions last meeting about, uh, literacy from the New Morning School for the program. I believe you've received, you just passed out, everybody got the, the information from them. They do have a very good program, so we don't have any problem with, with that at all. Um, we would like to recommend that the board authorize administration to conduct business this summer. Uh, you know, pay the bills, pay the people, things like that.
Bring the manifest forward in our, in our meeting in August.
Hire people.
Yep.
And, um, actually, it's gonna be September. This is no P, there's no A and F in, in August.
Oh, okay, until September. And actually, for hi- for hiring and for the manifest, I think should be two separate, uh, motions. So, you wanna make a motion for the manifest?
September twenty. Okay, whatever, however you wanna do it. Second.
Okay. Philip and?
Do you wanna wait till September twenty?
Yeah. Philip and Sue seconded it. All in favor? Yes.
No, that you already.
No, we don't have to motion the New Morning School. That was just the answer to our questions we had.
That was just information.
Um, motion passes seven zero zero, so that you can continue to pay the bills during the summer and bring the manifest to us at our first meeting in September. Um, we also probably should, while we're thinking of it, it wasn't on the agenda. Oh, it was on there. It's under new business, so. Anything else under admin and finance?
No.
All righty, we'll jump right to HR.
HR, we've reviewed a number of policies on our, at our meetings last week. Um, kind of an FYI, there's three of them we reviewed and we weren't making any changes to. So that was JICE, uh, KF, and IHBAA. Um, the biggest thing with KF was that there was a change in the reg that was requested by the fire department. So that's kind of why that one came up. And, uh,
Can you do that, making a change in that, or?
Yeah.
We didn't make any changes in the policy. The regs changed.
Okay, just in the regulation spot?
Just the regs changed. So the, all, all we're doing to those is adding to the policy that we did review it. And, uh, ICFA is coming up later, I guess.
Yep, we'll do that one afterwards, okay. The only other thing is, I've had a couple people in the committee ask questions as to where's the potential conflicts for interest? How do you guys handle it? Is it yes or no for people on the school board, to be coaches or on other, say, PFTs or other groups within the school? I'm hoping HR in the fall can just define that maybe in our policies.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sticking on the agenda for the fall, just so that, because our policies don't say anything to or against it. It's just ambiguous to it, so.
Back to IJOC.
IJOC is right. Um, so I figured maybe you guys just address it and actually maybe define it a little bit so that it, uh, removes that question in people's mind as to what you can and can't do on that. And we're gonna jump right to PNC. Diane?
We met two weeks ago. We don't meet again until October, but the committee is just continuing to work on our articles getting written, submitted to the paper. Um, we did set up our schedule two weeks ago as we discussed, so it's just, we continue to work on that.
And, yeah, last Thursday, you saw our first, um, article in the paper, our first column, Inside the School Doors, it's called. And it will be biweekly in the Gostown News. And it will be different topics every time. I think the next one actually is on classroom sizes.
Writing on classroom.
Not this week, but next week. You can read about some information on classroom sizes in the Gostown News from us. So that's a nice coincidence.
So I just had a question for the committee. As we were planning to meet not till October fourth on our traditional schedule, or did the board, does the committee wanna meet on either August thirtieth or September sec-twentieth out of sequence? But I didn't know if you wanted to wait until October, because we'll be into by then.
Yeah, we.
I don't wanna wait till October.
No, we need to meet in September because we're probably gonna have to have some more decisions on the articles made by then.
But, yeah, so I didn't know if you wanted to pick another day or if you wanted to.
I would like to do that.
On, well, the third meet, the, uh, third Monday in September, we have a school board meeting.
Right, not September twentieth.
And we have, I don't think we have, uh, would you?
A and F is gonna be meeting at six, so we don't gonna need somebody else at, no, we just discussed that. We need a longer meeting.
Hmm, no. So on the twentieth of August, A and F is gonna get?
No, September, we're discussing it since September.
No, September twentieth, yeah.
Oh, September. Oh, September, sorry. I'm confused, sorry.
Yeah, no, we just, we just discussed that, so I'll have a conflict, but if we can just get an alternate, that's fine. Or PNC can meet another.
We can pick another, we can pick another, because do we have anything on one of the other Mondays?
We do the thirteenth. I think that maybe C and E.
Yep.
HR has one on the thirteenth.
I would, I would be cheering for the thirteenth also.
You wanna do the last, um, Monday in the month? There's nothing scheduled for the twenty-seventh.
There's, that's, that would kinda defeat our purpose, I would say.
Well, that would be after, uh, that would be the next week.
First meet in September, first week in September before the school board meeting?
Yeah.
That's, uh, the holiday is the sixth, which is why we're not meeting until the twentieth. Can you meet on another night besides the Monday?
Yeah, I can do that tonight.
Yeah.
So why don't you talk, give Stacy a call, coordinate a name, email it out, and we'll get a day sometime in the first half of September.
Okay, okay. Okay.
C and E.
Uh, we met tonight. We reviewed, um, Steve Allen's, um, written report for athletics. If you were interested in seeing it, um, let us know. We're getting into your hands. Uh, accepted the work plan for next year and had a discussion, um, which is part of really an ongoing conversation about, um, rigor and, um, a peripheral discussion about grading at Mountain View and, and, uh, some level at the high school. And, um, hopefully we've brought everybody up to speed and to the extent that we need to take any action on that subject matter, we'll look to do it in the fall.
Sue Quinn, tenants' report.
Um, Friday was the last day of school. It's quiet. That's what I thought. Um, we had a great end of the year. Um, we had lots of promotion ceremonies, lots of activities going on throughout the district that were all just wonderful. High school graduation was great. Middle school promotion was wonderful. Um, kids were very well behaved the last week of school. I mean, we always get those little, you know, bumps in the road, but for the most part, things were really, really nice towards the end of the year. I got around to all the buildings, um, I think, but the middle school on Friday. Um, kids were still on task, working, you know, behaving, so it was really nice to see. Um, we have lots coming up this week, um, lots of training going on. Um, for two days, we have our reading training for the new reading program. Um, we have all but one teacher from K to six that's able to make it, so that was a great feat. Um, we're also doing some literacy work this week, um, extended school year. Teachers come in for a day, do planning. We, we have, every student has a goal sheet so that they, teachers, um, it's more targeted versus just a generic program. Every kid has a goal and a plan, um, for what they're looking at, so that's, they're gonna spend a day looking at those. I did confirm August thirtieth, um, school boards association can come and do your workshop for you from six to seven thirty, so that has been confirmed. Um, I'll get dinner of some sort here at five forty-five, so knowing people will be coming from work that will be available, um, before the meeting or during the meeting, you can eat, I'm sure. And, um, as we talked about earlier, the elementary facilities committee has been meeting. Um, I just wanted to let the board know, we did, the, the committee agreed to add three more parents to the committee than what we had originally thought. Um, we have Jeff Tied and Phil Kendall as the two parents. We thought we wanted to get a wider perspective since they had, both had been board members as well, and so we invited three more parents. Um, and so we have a nice representation from Glen Lake, Maple Lab, and Bartlett. Um, and the three parents volunteered for the committee, so we're meeting again on Friday at seven thirty to kind of next steps in the process, which is identifying what our building needs are to put together the RFP to go out to bid. So, um, that is working right through. And I think that was all I have.
And I forgot to mention in Maple Lab, they had their spring fling, which went very well, and one kid finally went three for three on. And I forgot to mention the Maple Lab, they have their spring fling, which went very well, and one kid finally went three for three on dunking me, so. It hadn't happened in the last five years, but it happened finally for me, so, we've, uh, got him recruited and got him into baseball right away, so, when he gets to high school, he'll be safe. Um, before we go into old business, I do need to make a disclosure, I actually received two, um, mail, two packages or packets in the mail to my personal home address. One of them was from a current teacher in our school district that has requested a level three grievance, um, we will discuss that in non-public, so you guys can be aware of it. And the other one I received was actually a packet that had been previously sent to me, I instructed that employee that it was not appropriate from myself or the board to receive parts of her personnel file. Um, that same packet was sent to me again with some additional letters that I had sent to her and Stacy had sent to her. Um, interesting, it was addressed to my personal address, the return address was my name at the SAU office, I don't mail things to myself, so. Um, I would appreciate if someone's gonna send something to me to please actually take, uh, credit for it, and if you do send mail to me, I would appreciate to go to the SAU office, let's document it and stamp that it came in, so we have it for legal reasons. And, that is it on that, I think some of you guys got copies of one of those same letters as well during the week, and that will all get done in non-public tonight.
And we'll discuss it in non-public.
Um, old business, IKFA, early graduation policy.
So, yes, we, we took it back from what the board has requested, and I think we've made all the changes to it that was requested at this point, so we're getting it back again.
For final vote. Do I have a motion on the floor to approve it? Seconded by Lori, sorry, Ken, she was faster. Anybody have any other questions, I know we've discussed it several meetings, so, this is the last chance to make comments or questions on it. Okay, all in favor of proving the motion as presented? And, one, two, three, four, five, six in favor, against, uh, two against, zero abstentions, motion passes six, two, zero. New business, um, Southwest Financial and Citizens Group, you have a presentation for us tonight, and you're actually first on the ad bucket, so you guys are welcome to, uh.
This is my, this is myself tonight.
Oh, just yourself, okay, and if you could be some kind to juice yourself?
Sure, is this okay, right here?
Yeah, you, if you wanna actually sit down, you're welcome to sit at the end of the table.
Okay, sure. Great. Yeah, my name's, uh, Bill Fazio, I'm with First Southwest Company, and, uh, we, we have a sort of a, we have a lot of mutual clients with Citizens Bank, but they couldn't be here tonight, but, uh, we assumed a lot of the business that they were doing a few years ago that they no longer do, the financial advisory business for cities and towns, and we work with a number of New Hampshire clients, uh, I'm actually based in Rhode Island, but I've worked with Londonderry Bedford School District, uh, Hudson School District, Nashville, so I sound very familiar with the area, so.
My same concern, I'm not sure, he's kinda far away from the microphone, I'm not sure if he can be heard on the.
Oh, shit. Is there any way we can verify that? Yeah, I don't think there's any way we can verify it, so Dick, if you're down in GTV and there's a problem, please give us a call, let us know.
Okay.
And actually, I should, I should say, we're actually looking at the refinancing of one of our existing bonds, uh, you know, the one for the high school, um, creating some cost savings, so, that's why we best, um, to come down and talk to us.
So, I did, uh, set up to, uh, Mr. Labor, uh, presentation, which I'll kinda go through very quickly, I know you have a busy evening tonight, but this really hit the highlights, but, uh, as the chairman said, back in two thousand and one, the district issued a bond, which has, uh, interest rates on it for about four point seven five percent to five percent right now, which at the time were the market rates, you know, were good rates. But, uh, that bond issued ago had a provision in there is that as it approaches to ten year anniversary of that bond issue, the district has the option to prepay it or refinance it, um, with lower debt, uh, you know, that's in, currently in the market right now, and based on, uh, market conditions right now, if you replace the existing two thousand and one debt, you could re, have a new bond in place, uh, with rates that would range from about zero point five percent to about three point six percent, so. That spread between the interest rates generates what we've, we've calculated, about three hundred seventy thousand dollars, uh, over the remaining life of the bond issue. Uh, that money all doesn't come to you at once, it's sort of spread out over the life of the bond issue. Uh, you save about twenty five thousand dollars a year, beginning in fiscal eleven through the fiscal twenty-one when the bond is paid off. Uh, we can't do some engineering where we can direct some of the savings to a specific fiscal year, say fiscal twelve or thirteen, depending on if the school board is looking for a reason in particular year to maximize savings. Uh, not to say all three hundred thousand, but we could probably gear maybe a hundred thousand dollars to a particular fiscal year, if the, the, the school district is looking for budget relief in that particular year. What's good about any type of municipal bond refunding, it's not like when you take out your mortgage and you refinance a mortgage, we're not extending the life of the bonds, we're not adding another ten or fifteen years to the original bond issue. The bond will be paid off in the original term that they authorized back in two thousand and one. Um, the savings are all net of all costs associated with it, and I can outline a lot of the costs, uh, the biggest cost is paying a premium to the original bondholders who bought the bonds, they were, if they were, the agreement was back, if they were gonna have their bonds redeemed, the district would pay them a certain premium to make, to compensate for them losing their, you know, losing frankly, uh, an, uh, an investment that was yielding five percent. Um, and really, the last caveat is that these savings really range, they, they, they change daily, cause as the interest rates change daily, um, the, the, uh, the, the expected results change. Uh, when I first met with Mr. Labor back in April, the savings were about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, what we've seen is April, May, and June is, uh, a rally in the barn market, meaning rates have come down quite a bit. That can change tomorrow, uh, I can't predict what will happen with rates, I can't, uh, uh, talk about that, but, uh, the, right now, you're sort of in a very good position if you wanna go ahead and, go ahead with the fina- this financing to realize some significant savings. Uh, within the last two years, we've worked with a number of, uh, New Hampshire communities on doing this, most recently, uh, Hudson School District back in oh nine, Bedford School District in, in oh eight, and, uh, we did Delnap County, which is, uh, was over by the Lakewood and Pisaki area, Laconia in, uh, July of, uh, no, May of two thousand and nine. So, it's a, it's an opportunity where if you have a bond issue that's coming close to that ten year anniversary when it can be refunded, it's a great opportunity to explore that. Those are really the highlights of the presentation, uh, I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
You say about twenty five thousand dollar year savings, you said it was a net saving, so that's after administrative costs and everything for the financing.
Yeah, all of those costs are built into the bond issue upfront, so, it's not, once you've paid those, when the bonds close, uh, there's no additional expenses for the remaining life of the issue.
Right. And if you vote tonight to do the refinance, how, how long's it take to lock in the rate?
Well, actually, uh, it, uh, typically, to do a tipi- uh, bond issue normally takes four to six weeks to, to move things along. Um, with this particular case, uh, in order to move forward, you have to adopt a re, what they call a refunding resolution, which is prepared by bond council that authorizes the, uh, the bond issue to move ahead. It doesn't obligate the district, so if the market goes away, or things, this, and then, you know, everyone walks away, and there's really no costs incurred by the district, but typically, four to six weeks. It might take a little longer in this case, cause it's been such a long time since the district issued debt back in two thousand and one, or I think actually in oh six, it was another issue, but in order to do that, we have to work with the district and creating one of the.
Yeah, oh six was the refinance.
Yeah, we have to work with the district and creating another, what they call prospectus or official statement, so that has to be updated, and that takes quite a bit of time, getting information not only from the district, but from the town, a- as it deals with unemployment rates and building permits and tax base information and student enrollment, so, depending on, uh, rate, uh, Mr. Labor's availability over the next couple of weeks, uh, the, the, the more available he is, the quicker it can take place, but in addition to this, you also have to visit with Moody's, uh, via conference call to confirm your bond rating, uh, and that can be set up for a conference call. So, yeah, typically a four to six week period, the expectation is rates will stay relatively stable between now and, and the end of summer, there's no expectation that rates are gonna go up anytime soon, the, the economic situation hasn't really improved much at all. Unemployment is still very high, um, so, there's really no urgency that rates are gonna go up, but typically, four to six weeks.
So, Bill, um, could the district, uh, position itself, uh, w- with the discussions with Moody's, uh, preparing the new prospectus, and then set a target? Uh, in other words, if, uh, uh, bond rates should perhaps go up to four percent, four and a half percent, uh, the next time they approach three percent or three and a half percent, could that be a tripwire to start?
Absolutely, yeah, you, you can set your own internal benchmark as far as what you would save as a minimum threshold, and once you, uh, are able to achieve that, then you would be justified in moving forward with the financing, and we've worked with communities just like this, uh, the city of Newport authorized us to do a bond issue in February, refunding bond issue, and kinda sat around and didn't, really wasn't in the money, as they say, for a particular time, but lo and behold, uh, I figured what the specific, it was a, a very severe economic announcement that came out that caused rates to plummet on Thursday. By Monday, we had them in the market, and they were able to lock in the rates, uh, literally that, that, within seventy-two hours, just because of that, we had updated the prospectus, we had their rating call in place, so that we were ready to act on that.
And how long can, of span can we have for the, after with the four to six weeks, with everything all taken care of, I mean, how long, what it's, do we have six months to make a decision?
Yeah, you, you have it really indefinite, uh, uh, once that resolution's in place, or the vote, or the board's move forwards in place, it's really in place until it's, uh, I guess, uh, uh, I guess, you know, voted against or taken off the table, but it's really inde- in place indefinitely. So, a- and you do have some time, cause the first for surety that we can refinance is July of two thousand and eleven, so, you know, we, it's not, uh, we missed the July two thousand and ten payment,
Right.
because, you know, we just got to, you know, we just discovered the opportunity to back in the March or April, but, uh, you know, there is still some opportunity to act before July two thousand and eleven to refinance that payment. You, you won't have any, that, that just pushes the savings out further, you won't realize them as soon as, as, uh, you would if you did the refinancing quicker.
So, let me clarify, so we would be refinancing for June one of two thousand and eleven?
Right.
Might catch my next one.
Right, yeah, there is an interest payment that's due in January of eleven, which we can work to help refinance that, but, uh, that's, uh, that's an interest only payment, so it's not gonna, you know, it's not really what you wanna refinance is the, of the principal payments, which take place in July. You know, but, uh, in order to really position the district, or the, the district is to get to the official, you know, authorization upon the board, because that allows bond council, which is the legal firm in this place, to draft all the documents and issue their, uh, opinion and, uh, and make it a valid obligation.
Does anybody have any questions?
I have one.
All right.
Um, are bond rates fixed or adjustable?
They're fixed right now, you can, there are some securities that do adjustable rate securities, that you don't see them very often now, cause rates are so low, but th- these are fixed rate securities.
Okay, and we currently have fixed rate?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this new board has never been that, uh, been very conservative of votes, used fixed rates.
That's what I, that's what I was worried on.
Yes.
And we've looked to see if we needed to have a public hearing, because it's a bond, but it's, because refinancing a bond we already have, we don't need to have that.
Right, it's not new debt, it's just, uh, acting on another debt, so.
Nope.
Research.
Take the motion, and an affirmative vote in his board to move ahead with the refinance, anybody else have any questions? If I wanna make a motion on this side.
Uh, will that we move forward with the refinancing?
Seconded by Phillip. Anybody, I'll, I'll, anybody have any questions on the motion, or?
Does the board wanna put a percentage on there, or do you want us to just?
That's what I say. As long as the rate's under X amount of percent?
Yeah, I think, you know, normally, the, the minimum threshold, what they say, the, the National Government Finance Officers Association has a threshold, we have to realize three percent net present value savings, and we, we help you calculate that as a minimum to move forward. So, if you make that as part of the resolution, right now, we're over five percent savings, uh, as, you know, as percent of the financing, so you, you.
Would you like to add net three percent savings as part of the motion?
Net three percent savings.
Will you add that to your section?
Okay.
Okay, so the motion is to do the refinance, providing we have a net three percent savings. Anybody have any questions on that? All in favor of the motion?
Please repeat the motion.
Um, the motion is to go ahead with refinancing, providing it pres- it provides a three percent net savings to the district. Okay, so we'll do the voting, we'll make sure everybody, everybody in favor of the vote? That passes unanimously, seven zero zero, um, hopefully that'll provide some tax savings to our taxpayers.
Absolutely, and Ray will be in touch, he won't go on vacation, I want to.
That was.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hey, you know, going on vacation, talking about something, huh?
Bill Fazio, that was a very nice synopsis.
Thank you, yeah, I know, I didn't wanna go through the whole.
Thank you, thank you.
No, 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 that was terrific.
Thanks, I didn't want to do that.
My wife's a schoolteacher, so I gotta get home tomorrow, the last day of the school.
Thank you, Bill. Um, we'll jump right to our next pres- presentation, and that's actually from the CAS committee, the co-curricular fee committee is what originally was, we call it CAS committee.
I can't, I'm from them, I'm gonna do a PowerPoint presentation, and, um, I think Steve Fountain may be leading the group off, and just as a reminder to the board, in, it was either September or October of this year, the board authorized and, um, asked the CAS group, which has kind of been a group that's worked several different times, but they got a good focus, and so they moved along nicely, um, to, to look at our comprehensive, um, to look at our athletic facilities and look at our co-curricular facilities, such as the theater, that was the only one I had. And so, the question was, we have several things on our, on CIP, we have resurfacing of the Barnard Park track, we have a renovation to the theater, and so the question we asked them to look at was, is that the best use of money, is that the best use of our facilities, take a comprehensive look and help us move forward in the best way that we can, knowing we wanna meet our needs ten or twenty years down the road, not just three months. Um, and so, I'm gonna turn it over to Steve, to start us off.
I'm, uh, Steve Fountain, for those of you who don't know me, I'm the athletic director here, and the co-president of the co-curricular activities support team, otherwise known as CAS, formerly known as the stadium committee. Uh, I wanna thank you for putting us on your agenda tonight, you spending time with us tonight, for us to give you this report, uh, and our findings. Uh, this evening's aims for the group is to cover the charge put forth to, uh, pu- put forth by you to us, and to be as succinct as possible for you to ask any questions or concerns at the end of it. Uh, before I start the presentation, I just wanted to point out that, if there was one thing that we did learn, uh, while doing these exercises, that we don't have a perfect solution. Um, and the following report is not meant to be perfect, considering the economic times we're facing, and our limitations of space among many other limiting variables, uh, we are offering some answers to the charge put forth to us by the, by the school board. I believe this group has done, uh, its due diligence, and will offer a very thoughtful and thorough report. It's my belief that it's our responsibility as leaders of this school district, that we match the enthusiasm, energy, and spirit of our kids, uh, it's my hope that this report puts us on a path to do just that. And now, onto the presentation, the mission of the CAS commen- of the CAS is, uh, that we recognize, I'll read through it for those of you that can't, uh, see it and read it, uh, support, is that, that co-curricular activities, uh, support development and or improvement of the facilities used in support of GHS co-curricular activities. Furthermore, I'd add that CAS recognizes the critical role of inorganic sports, fine and performing arts, and other student activities in promoting academic excellence, citizenship, sportsmanship, artistic, and self-expression, uh, instilling pride in the community, teaching lifelong lessons of teamwork, self-discipline, and facilitating the physical, artistic, emotional development of Gosstown High School's student population. Um, since I've been here the last two years, there's one thing that's been come very evident to me, uh, being, coming from the college level and down to the high school level, that co-curriculars and all these activities are not just another part. I truly believe in these last two years, if there's one big thing that I've learned, it's a part of the whole, it's a part of education, it is education, we have teachers out there. I look at my, the coaches as teachers, I look at all the people doing co-curriculars and activities after school as teachers, another opportunity for our youth to be in touch with an adult figure that's hopefully, that are, I know, impressing upon them these good, these high standards, and they're coming out with a great, uh, hopefully, a great experience. And, more so at the high school level and this level than the college level, because some kids aren't going on any further, this is the last chance that some of that interaction will happen, so, uh, keeping that in mind. Our charge for the night that was bestowed upon us from the school board, um, was to investigate and prepare a report on the following, to complete a comprehensive review of current co-curricular and ac- athletic facilities, including but not limited to GHS, MVMS, Barnard Park, Seminary Field, and Lions Field, uh, Lions Lee, sorry, and develop a comprehensive plan for facilities that meet current and future needs. And also to investigate the co-curricular fee, and identify at what point and under what conditions a client may be willing to participate and accept the fee structure. Before I turn it, uh, whoop, sorry, I'm lost here, uh, the next slide is, uh, athletic use, and this is kinda what we've done in the past couple of years as a group. Um, put together, uh, we went out and we. Put together, uh, we went out and we, we, uh, did a survey with all the user groups to find out what the needs are and what the perceived needs are, and what are some of the limitations of what we have to work with. Those, that information came back, uh, from that information, and this was all done by outside, uh, uh, group, um, a landscaping architect at that, at that time. And Michael will get further along with those, uh, those reports later on in this report. Uh, the, the survey went out, from that survey and all the information we gathered, uh, the landscaping architect, architect put forward, um, some plans, the master plans that we have at our disposal. There are some, as you can read, limited scope of the plan, GHS and Barnard Park, and, uh, multiple options developed in, in that, uh, in that original, uh, push, uh, two thousand and eight into two thousand and nine. More recently, this spring and May, uh, we had a review of our performing arts, uh, a building architect, as well as a, a construction management firm, came in and looked at what we have here, the footprint we have, um, they gave opinions, um, both gave opinions and reported back to us. So, this group has gone out and paid for services, professional services, come in and assess and give opinions back. And also, the study of the student activities versus performance in, in May two thousand and ten, that was, that information flowed from a fees committee at the spring of two thousand and nine. Before I turn it over to the rest of the group, I'll go through the presentation agenda, what we'll follow through with tonight. First, we'll start with a why, uh, invest in co-curricular activities, and we'll go on to results of needs, uh, and analysis, and then the feasible recommendations, and then the next steps. Now, I'd like to pass it over to Sheri Heber to go over the why component.
Hello, everyone. I'm Sheri Heber. Uh, Jane Stekowicz and I were the subcommittee, the why subcommittee, in this who, what, where, when, why, um, presentation. And so, what I'd like to do, what we tried to do was to take a look at some of the national studies that have been done about the importance of co-curricular activities in education, and then we tried to find statistics from the Goffstown School District, so we could give you sort of a sense of where we stand. And I guess we'll start out with what a good value, uh, co-curriculars are for a school district. Nationally, the statistics are, and by the way, um, these statistics come from a study that was done by the National Federation of State High School Associations, um, which, which sort of put together all of the studies that they could find on these issues into one document. So, that's where we, we received this information. Nationally, one to three percent of sto- of total school budgets, um, are applied to co-curricular activities. And in our district, um, in the total district, we are at one point seven percent of the budget, and one point oh five percent if you exclude, uh, the amount for athletics. At the high school level, we, the co-curriculars make up one point two percent of the budget and point oh six percent of the budget, um, excluding the athletics. So, so, we're a little bit in that range of one to three percent, we're on the, sort of the lower half of, of that, um, figure. What we've tried to do is to show, um, what we think that the activities do to support our education system. And things that we found is that the activities, anyone who participates in co-curricular activities, and by co-curriculars, I'm not, I'm talking about sports, I'm talking about music, art, drama, uh, clubs, it's, it's a very broad, uh, category. But participants in these activities have, generally have higher GPAs, better attendance, and fewer discipline problems. And some of the studies we found to show this, um, for student athletes, uh, the average student athlete's GPA is two point nine eight, as opposed to a two point one seven for others. Absences per year, six point three days per year for student athletes versus eleven point nine days for non-athletes. And studies also show that student athletes score approximately ten percent higher in their core classes, which is math, science, English, and social studies. Then, something, uh, about the performing arts participants, uh, they're four times more likely to be recognized for academic achievement, uh, to win a school attendance award, to participate in a science and math fair, and to win an award for writing. Music students, uh, scored eleven percent higher on the two thousand and one SATs than non-music students. And, um, I asked Mr. McBride if he could give me any information about Goffstown High School, and I think these, uh, statistics, statistics come from the graduating class of two thousand and nine.
Did it was the, all four classes during the two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine school year?
Okay, all right. So, um, okay, so all grade levels, that's right, okay. So, what we found is that the top twenty students all participate in co-curricular activities. Thirty-two out of the top thirty-three students participate, fifty-one out of the top fifty-four participate, and eighty-three out of the top one hundred participate in co-curriculars. And then, you know, uh, on the other s- end of the spectrum with that, um, ten out of the bottom eleven students did not participate in co-curriculars, and seventy-nine out of the bottom one hundred students did not participate. And then, we went to some of these national studies about, um, some of the, the behaviors, um, that non-participants are more likely to engage in. And you can see, I, on the slide, that they're much more, fifty-seven percent more likely to drop out of school, um, to use illegal drugs, very high percentages to become team parents, smoke cigarettes, or be arrested. And part of this, um, I found in looking at these studies is, is that the riskiest time, or the riskiest behavior takes place in the time period right after school, w- um, before, you know, after school before dinner, when no parents are home necessarily and kids aren't being supervised and, you know, they're getting into trouble. So, um, if you keep them sinking and running and, and playing baseball, um, they're not quite as risky behavior. We tried to talk about some of the, uh, the fact that these types of activities, and I, I think, um, Steve touched on this, that, that these, in and of themselves, I mean, I guess we, we think of them as being extra to school and, and the mission of the school, but, but really, what they, they are educating our students in things that are incredibly important, in life skills. And we've tried to sort of outline those, um, skills, the, you know, working with a team, what it means to win and to lose, and how you deal with that, um, how to work hard and have self-discipline. And all of these things, I think, do a tremendous amount in promoting self-confidence when these students achieve, I mean, I think we've all seen it, you know, when the students achieve a goal that they've set in these activities, um, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's really immeasurable, I think. Also, that the, these activities promote responsible social behaviors, um, appreciation of personal health and fitness, and strong social bonds. Extracurric- or co-curricular activities are also a predictor of future success. There are studies that show that participants are more likely to engage in regular volunteer projects, to feel comfortable speaking publicly, they're more likely to vote, um, you know, successful, people who have been, become successful in business and other areas are, have very strong, um, um, involvement in co-curriculars when they were in school. So, um, so, those are the, um, some of the highlights of what we found, um, and if anyone has any questions, I'm, if not, I'll turn it over.
But it's good information for the public to hear as well.
Hello. My name's Mike Sharon, and I'll continue with the presentation, starting with the next slide. I'm gonna discuss with you, uh, kind of results of the needs analysis. We got to this part of our process, we were pretty convinced that, um, there's a reason to invest a lot of time and energy into the support of co-curricular activities. We knew that, and we proved to ourselves. With regard to Goffstown, uh, Steve touched on this, some of the input that we sought out and received, which was very critical to us, included the survey of user groups, so we reached out to, uh, various private athletic clubs, sports clubs in town, Parks and Recs, uh, programs, the, uh, the school itself, coaches, um, and the athletic director as well. We sought out opinions from the stu- school district, uh, faculty and the staff, and, um, had, uh, the Parks and Rec, uh, director join us for two meetings as well. So, that was very helpful input to us. We also, um, at our own expense, engaged, uh, three professionals, Huntress Associates, which is a landscape architects and planning firm, Tony Fallon, who's an architect, and Hutter Construction, and they helped us with professional third-party opinions, uh, which we thought was, was critical to the effort to, uh, to form an objective opinion, uh, and we essentially asked them two things. Give us your first impression about the facilities here, understanding what we think our needs are, and secondly, what are the possibilities? And we'll share a little bit of, of that with you here. Those, uh, studies cost a total of eighty-nine hundred dollars, all in.
Can, can I just clarify, that was the, the CASC committee has their own funds, they do their own fundraising, just so people know that, that was not district funds paid for those? So, we do appreciate the CASC's support of our facilities, that they're expending their funds to do this.
Thank you. Some of the key observations that we made, uh, first of all, it's important to know that co-curricular activities, they really facilitate, uh, or they serve the entire community. If you have any doubt, think about how many times the Hebrew auditorium is used for the entire community. And the same is true with a lot of the athletic facilities, both here and at Barnard Park. It's really hard to succeed with a plan for the future without bringing together the whole community in this effort. Secondly, um, there are considerable capacity constraints, both inside, inside and out, and there's not a great deal that we can do about that. Steve alluded to the realization that, that we can't come up with a perfect solution, and in fact, we cannot, because the footprint here, uh, in the, in the general campus area is what it is. So, we really sought out what we thought would be the best alternative to present to you tonight. Uh, with regard to athletic facilities specifically, um, first of all, there is a critical shortage, I think everybody realizes this, is really a critical shortage of rectangular fields, uh, on this campus. Uh, in the fall, the practice venues are critically short, you have football, you have soccer, you have field hockey, competing for space. Uh, there's no track to compete on. Yes, there is, what at Barnard Park, is not a competitive, uh, level, uh, track for those student athletes participating in those programs. Uh, the parking capacity is constrained at Barnard Park. Outdoor rest facilities are generally not available unless the temporary facilities are brought in. And, uh, again, we, we realized early on that ideal conditions with all sports on cas- on campus are really probably not within reach. But, it's possible to make significant improvements in a lot of areas. With regard to performing arts, the Assembly Wing was built in nineteen seventy-two, and it was built for teaching and oral presentations. Uh, it's inadequate in, in terms of the seating capacity, it's presently at three seventy-five, I believe it has four hundred seats, and twenty-five are not usable, I think that's correct. The guideline, as we understand it, is to have seating for half of your student population, so seven hundred is a more desirable target for the, for the school, and that leaves, uh, discussion on the community's needs out for the moment. Uh, the seating that's there is damaged, parts are no longer available, they simply don't make those seats nor the parts to support them. Uh, storage is nonexistent, and the same is true for shop space. Presently, the exit quarter is used, uh, in a lo- on a lot of occasions, uh, and that's, uh, at least partially because the storage trailer is no longer on the promises, premises. Obviously, the use of the exit quarter for other activities, storage and shop activities and, uh, performing arts preparation, uh, functions is, is really not advised, and there was a recent fire inspection citation for that. Uh, the AV and the electrical infrastructure, uh, is very outdated. And finally, uh, it is non-compliant in terms of handicap, handicap access to seating, and that has to do with the pitch of the floor where wheelchair, uh, would, would be seated, uh, the dispersion of the, uh, the, the seats where they're available. In an ideal world, you have a cross aisle for, uh, somebody with need of access to go from one place to another.
For those who don't know, the handicap seating we have is in the very front, they took out a row of chairs, so that's handi- on the right-hand side. So, it is on an angle, so it isn't even a flat surface that our handicap accessible seating is.
There is a hearing impaired, uh, impaired system in there, but it is, as I understand it, poorly integrated with the AV system that's in place right now. So, the initial recommendations we would propose to you, and I, I'm gonna spare you all the discussion along the way of the various possibilities, because it's lengthy and there wasn't always agreement, but it really crystallized for us in the last month or so. What we would pro- propose to you is this, in terms of the athletic facilities, uh, a track, there is a definite need for a track at Goffstown High School. There's a need for a multipurpose synthetic field at Goffstown High School with lighting. Uh, there's a need for two-way traffic flow to the rear of the building. And, uh, it makes a great deal of sense to improve the rectangular field at Barnard Park, keeping in mind that, that we consider that to be part of the campus, um, uh, used both by the community and the student athletes here. With regard to the per- performing arts facilities, uh, it is possible, we believe, to expand the footprint, adding fifteen hundred feet of square foot, uh, addition to storage and thirty-five hundred square feet of addition to seating. It would be necessary to, to engage a civil engineer and an architect, because there's a wetlands mitigation concern that we have. We didn't go that deep into the study to be able to give you an answer on that, but we recognize that that's needed. Uh, there's a definite need for new seating, uh, and a definite need for new AV equipment, uh, in the, in the theater area. To the best of our knowledge, um, this is very, very preliminary numbers, but the construction management firm suggested to us that theater improvements could be in the range of one point five million dollars. We understand that the athletic facility improvements, as, as they've mapped out for you here, should be in the range of two million dollars. It was a very preliminary though. So, our suggestions to you, uh, for moving forward, uh, number one, to develop a co-curricular master plan for the Goffstown High School campus. Um, we hope that this is a start, that this blueprint tonight is a start of that process. Uh, we feel it's very important to partner with Parks and Rec to coordinate improvements at Bar- Barnard Park, keeping in mind that it is a, it, these are really shared facilities. Uh, and we've received, um, kind of a warm welcome from the Parks and Rec folk, they seem to be very much on board, but I wouldn't speak for them, but it's our first impression. Uh, we think we should also flush, flush out cost estimates, uh, for this plan, to be more specific, to bring that back to you. Uh, help to develop a long-term funding solution for the maintenance of, of the facilities on an ongoing basis, and in doing all this, to in- incorporate activities fees into future planning, and to make them part of the solution. Finally, uh, we've had some discussion around the idea of developing a concept, a concept around a central body in the community to manage and schedule athletic fields for the entire community, including, uh, the facilities here at Goffstown High School. So, we started this, uh, actually, started this under the name of the Stadium Committee, uh, several years ago now, and it's continued through today. What we, what we know, uh, we feel very certain about is, number one, the facility's being studied to support the entire community, it's important to look at it that way. Uh, the space constraints will not go away. Uh, we don't think there's any way to wave a magic wand and solve that problem over the short term. Uh, we know that supporting co-curricular activities is truly the best value all around, it's a, it's a tremendously worthwhile investment to make in the students and in the entire community. Uh, we feel that long-term solutions are definitely the responsible an- answer, um, but the facility improved, improvements probably won't be enough for the entire community. Because of the limited footprint, you can't solve all problems for the entire community, and I think you just have to accept that. But we do think there are really very intelligent creative solutions to get through this, to find funding, to move it forward, to make a big difference for for everybody that's involved. And we're very anxious and willing to to help with that process going forward. That'll wrap up my comments and invite Frank, who I think might wanna add some closing remarks, and any and all of us will take questions.
I was just going to speak briefly on the notion of needs versus wants, and how it can be particularly hard to identify what needs are during a tough economic time. And the example I was going to give, or I'm choosing to give, would be, and I use some of these, I spoke to this in my graduation remarks, is that in nineteen ninety-six, there were thoughtful people that sat around this table and felt that it was okay at the time to have one advanced placement course at Goffstown High School. In two thousand and ten, there are eleven. You could have, you could perhaps argue that the renovation to Goffstown High School that occurred in, is it two thousand and one now, two thousand and one, two thousand and three? Was it a need? Many thought that it was, took three years to pass, came to fruition, and I would again say that it made a tremendous difference in the lives of every student who went through Goffstown High School after that renovation passed. The notion, again, the track, we have to solve. It's just been, it's been a challenging one for me personally, as a former athletic director here and now as a principal, because we have a track in town, it's smaller, it's older now, it's six lanes, not eight, and our athletes don't use it. We haven't had a home meet for several years. And I'm not placing fault, I'm just saying that's something that we need to solve. That's one of the ones that we definitely need to solve. Storage space for the theater, it's, again, we should solve that issue. And Josh and Doug would be the first, now this would be the first, they could be neither, but putting that aside, there's lots of stuff all over the place, because there's no place for storage. And then if I could just, synthetic field, again, doesn't solve everything, but when you have a synthetic field, rectangular field, and you put lights on it, you greatly expanded the amount of use you can have on that field, which is going to be a tremendous relief to a lot of the different sports in town. And it also, when you put a beautiful field with lights, as Mike spoke to others, that community aspect in what, how we can enhance what we already do, and we do a very good job now, I think can, again, can make a huge difference. And I think this could be one of those conversations that we'll look back ten years from now and say, wow, did that come at the right time? And what a difference it made. And I think we'll look back at it ten years from now, like we do as we sit here now, thinking, one AP class versus eleven, and again, the choices and what it's given to the students, it makes a tremendous, tremendous difference. Presentation was so good, I do not have much to offer, but I would definitely, if you do have questions. One last thing, this is a great group, too, and we came close to doing something like this five or six years ago, and I feel as someone that was there, then we probably didn't capitalize, and we lost some great parents who now are off doing other things with grown children. And I just think this is a, this is a great opportunity, and we have great capable people who will help to really put a good plan in place and hopefully give voters a choice to weigh in on what they think about this idea of providing increased opportunities to our our students in town here, so, thank you. But we would love if you do have any questions.
Did you investigate about a co-curricular fee in that aspect of it? At what point and under what conditions a parent may be willing to participate?
We had some initial conversations about it, but they're not detailed conversations, because we held short on coming back with a recommendation about specific funding solutions. I do believe that that would be part of the next update for the school board, if you're so inclined to invite us to do that. We have had those discussions, I just don't think they're presentation ready.
I for one have always been against fees for different activities that just really add to the student's life here and there, broadening of their perspectives in in the real world. I think a lot of people need to realize that art, drama, singing, music, athletics, there are a lot of career opportunities that come from students' participation in those different fields. And it's not just, you know, learning how to draw a picture, oh, isn't that nice, you appreciate art. In our society, there are innumerable amounts of career opportunities that come from those experiences that they learn here. Music, drama, singing, all of those are the same things. So everyone is not going to be a professor at a college. Everyone is not going to be an academician, but certainly everyone in our schools can be helped in their fifty, I just lost the word, their, anyway, their scope can be increased by being in these sorts of programs. So I don't think that they're extra at all, I think that prep schools mandate those kind of programs. Every semester, you will do these things after school. And I think there's a reason that they do that, and all of those things that you've mentioned are exactly why. At my barbecue yesterday for Father's Day, I have five brothers and sisters who are graduates of Goffstown High School anyway, also. And the idea came up that the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary is coming up next year of Goffstown. And wouldn't it be wonderful if there was a Goffstown High School reunion? Everyone would be invited from every single year. And I think if we did something like that, that that would be a wonderful way to get funds, alumni funds, for what we need done here. And I think if we had something like that sort of activity, that a lot of alumni would see what our needs here and probably would be very glad to help out when they could.
Great idea. Do you have anything, do you want to share any questions?
Thank the cast committee very much, that's actually a very detailed report, greatly appreciated.
I was gonna say, next steps. Might I, might I recommend that the board, I think what the board would need to do is either adopt or not adopt their recommendations. And then, and you don't have to do that today, because we have time, but I'm thinking, maybe over the summer, look at those recommendations, formulate your questions, if we want to bring them back in September, and ask, answer those questions, and by then, I could maybe start to think about a plan of action, whether, things like, I believe we will likely have some money left in impact fees from our two studies, is there money in there that maybe in two thousand and eleven we can go forward and request the voters to use some of that money to do the studies for these two projects, how much those are actually gonna cost. We likely will have a bond proposal in two thousand and twelve, do we tie those together, do we keep them separate? Starting to look at those pieces of the puzzle, where does three million dollars or so come from? How do we approach that? I mean, there are obviously things we need to do, there are things that are in CIP already. We either need to decide in the next couple of years that we're gonna redo Barnard Park, or we're gonna move the track and build a new one. I mean, these are not things that we can continue to hang on to, we have no track. Barnard Park is falling apart, we can't use it for meets, and the theater is falling apart, we're lacking seating. We don't meet ADA compliance, when the trailer crashed and fell down last year, all our storage is in the building, the fire chief, we're now being inspected every year, fire chief says you can't have it in the hallways, you can't have it here. So we we absolutely need to address these things, they're not something that we can just continue to put on the back burner. So looking at those projects along with other building projects, maybe the direction to kind of fold them all together. I would recommend the board kind of take your time over the summer, think about them. If you have questions, let me know, we can bring the group back together, give them more charges, we can continue to ask questions. But at some point, the board will need to kind of adopt a recommendation, whether we continue to go forward with Barnard Park and just the theater restoration, which means replacing just some seating and lighting, or go for a renovation and addition, so we need to weigh back and forth, all of those options, to come up with a, kind of what does the board believe is the best plan.
Thank you very much.
So we put that on the September agenda.
Yep, on the September agenda. So that if we need to attend for back the second meeting in September. I also get a motion to authorize the superintendent to hire during summer months, since we will not be meeting until the end of August. Can I have that motion, please? Thank you, signed by Philip.
Do you have a question? Do we have any anticipated positions that are vacant right now that we need to be?
Yes, we have a reading physician or math physician at the middle school, we have a nurse at the middle school. We likely will have a science physician at the high school. That will be a leave of absence request that you denied, that we were, we are pending a resignation on that.
Is this me?
So yes, we have, I think, three positions that we're still hiring.
What? I can't understand you. Thank you. I thought it was calling me, and I can't figure out why. So, all right. So we need to actually move on that motion, unless anybody has any other questions, all in favor of the motion. And she now? Six zero zero now, because Kent has left. Safe school report, that's always fun.
Just as a follow-up to, I thought I did this last year, but I think I did it in much less detail. Looking at data, I thought I'd just give you all the data. This is actually a two-part summary, one is on, one is on safe schools and one is on bullying. As part of your actual bullying policy, I'm supposed to report to the board, so I have been to, consider this my report out. What I, what I did was, I thought I made enough copies, sorry. What I did was broke them out by high school, middle school, and elementary school. So the first ones you're seeing are the safe schools report, broken out by months. Then you can see what the main infractions were, you can see what the consequences of the actions were. So how many kids were suspended for one day in school suspension versus out of school suspension, things like that. AES is what? Alternative, that's your in- or in-school suspension program. All right, and OES is what? OES is out of school suspension. So at Goffstown High School, we had a hundred and fifty-six safe schools reports. Now, mind you, remember, these are not discipline reports, these are reports that are, that have any kind of assaultive or physical behavior. So we had a hundred and fifty-six of them. I do note, in September, we had thirty-three, twenty-four of them were for smoking. And so the kids learned after the first month that you can't smoke, it takes a little practice for them, particularly our younger students. One of the other things that you will notice at the high school, one of the things we have done is with our resource person who monitors our parking lot and our students who leave our buildings illegally when they leave, go to leave campus, is that we, when they come back to campus, or we catch them in the parking lot, we actually have them empty their pockets, because we know they're not actually going out to their cars for something good usually. And so we are able to catch a lot of students with cigarettes or illegal substances. And so that has been a very preventative measure that we've taken on, and the police department has worked really well with us. So then if you...
These are reports basically that are, the police are brought in for?
No, these are just, the police are not brought in for them, what we do is they're reports that we have to file with the police department. So the only time the police are brought into them is if they feel like it rises to the level that it would involve charges or that it would go through the court system, like if a student was already involved in court and it was a violation of their probation, then it, they would act on that.
How involved is the school resource officer?
For these reports, the resource officer would not be involved at all. If the resource officer is involved, we do not need to file a safe schools report. So if we, say we had a physical fight here at the high school between two boys, and the resource officer was there, present, he files his report, we don't need to file a safe schools report. So these are exclude any, because then we wouldn't have documentation, the police department would have that. So these exclude any that the SRO would have been directly involved, and/or the police department. If we call, if we have a kid who's out of control, and we call the police department and they come into the building, and if they've intervened, we don't file a safe schools report, because the police haven't involved, they file a report themselves. So you can see the main infractions, a physical altercation can be anything from throwing a rubber band at another kid and it hits the other student, to an actual physical fight, it goes the gamut. A verbal altercation, it could be a screaming match, it could be a verbal threat, anything of those sorts, smoking and possession of cigarettes, theft, illegal drugs or alcohol, that could be just possession, that could be, we suspect a student has been smoking marijuana before school and is in school. It could be just having drug paraphernalia on them, without any actual, say it was a smoking pipe or something versus actually having marijuana on them, just having the equipment is a safe schools report. And then illegal possession of a weapon, could be a knife or a blade, we have students who go hunting, forget they had the knife, but it is a reportable offense. So then you have the consequences. So Goffstown High School had a total of a hundred and fifty-six, Mountain View had a total of eighty-nine for the school year. Maple Ave had a total of six. And Bartlett did not have any, Glen Lake had none either, those little guys. Trending that I saw, the biggest difference between... Yeah, the biggest difference between the high school and the middle school is as you get older, the interactions change. So the middle school, a lot of the physical things were, you know, shooting rubber bands, pushing the kid on the back, hitting him with a notebook, things like that. When you get to the high school, it's a lot more physical, kids getting in fights, things like that, so I do see that trend. Obviously, smoking is much more significant at the high school. And just bullying complaints, I have just a list of, Mountain View had ten complaints, Maple Ave had one, Dunbarton had one. We're gonna be meeting with the high school. One of the things in the SAU, I get the safe schools reports, Ryan gets the bullying reports. Some of the safe schools report identify some bullying incidences, one of the things we have to look in, and we're gonna meet over the summer at our, look at our policies, to see, we don't identify if you fill out a safe schools and it's bullying, you should also fill out a bullying report, so we want to just make sure we're consistent. I don't believe the high school is filling, I think they're filling out the safe schools report and not the bullying report, so we need to just figure that piece of it out. So we have that on our summer agenda to just kind of make sure we're all following the same process and procedures on what we should be doing.
Is there any, you may have done this already, but is there any way to sort out the number of distinguishable students involved? Not, I don't care who they are.
Is it the same student, repeated?
Well, yeah, I mean, let's, let's, let's say, let's say that of a hundred and fifty-six total complaints at the high school, total issues at the high school, that one person was responsible for one each month.
Yeah, I could do that by, yeah.
That would be twelve incidents, but you're dealing with one person.
Yeah, I would say we probably have a handful of students who are multiple offenders. I could go through, I don't, I don't have it on a spreadsheet, I did all the counting by hand, I have four hundred forms, I just went through and counted, then tally sheeted them. I could go back and look, but I would say we probably have a handful of students that are multiple offenders. Do they take up, I would say, like, if I had to guess at the, at the high school with a hundred and fifty-six safe schools, I would say there's probably three or four that maybe have four or five.
Each?
Each. Not tons, so I would never, I wouldn't say there was five that take up all the hundred and fifty-six.
Thank God.
Yeah. And again, some of them are small, little incidences, but because it may be assaultive behavior, you know, if you whack your, another kid across the head with your notebook, fooling around, that's a safe schools reportable incident. They could have been just fooling around, there was no injury, but we have to report it, so. I can answer any other questions, what's kind of a...
What is, what is it based on, the policy of whether or not it gets filled out?
It's based on our, two things, one is our policy on, like, for a physical, what is an assault, as well as our memorandum of understanding with the police department.
So they get filed with the police department?
We fax them right over, as soon as we have twenty-four hours to file them, and we, the building levels send them right over to the police department, and a copy comes over to my office.
Do we have anything in place of ensuring whether or not something's been filled out, if it was supposed to? Or, or the other way, if something was filled out and it wasn't supposed to? Do we have any sort of...
If it wasn't filled out... If it wasn't filled out, if something was filled out that shouldn't have been filled out, it would just, the police department would call us and say, why was this filled out? Our policy actually says to err on the, um, reason of caution and send it. If something was supposed to get filled out and wasn't filled out, other than me knowing about something and asking the question, or the police department got a complaint or heard something, they'll call me and say, hey. For example, let me give you an example. We had an incident at, um, the elementary school. A child put his hand down, the other kid sat on his hand. We didn't feel like it was assault. The one parent complained to the police department. We hadn't filed a safe school, 'cause I didn't feel like it was an assault. The police department felt it was an assault, um, and so we filed the report afterwards. So, because our policy says an assault is anytime one student touches another student. And so that would be added. Other than, I guess I could, I, I can't be everywhere to know everything, but our administrators have all had training. They all know what safe schools reports are. They all know they have to file them. And just by volume, I'm guessing they're doing that.
Any other questions?
All righty. We're gonna give the floor back to Sue for a budget committee update from the last meeting they held, uh, last Tuesday.
It was a very interesting meeting. I didn't get home until almost eleven o'clock. Uh, was not a happy night. The budget committee has decided, actually took a vote, that both municipal and school side budgets are to be ten percent less than the current budgets. So for us, that's three and a half million dollars they wanna see, and for the town side, it's two million dollars that they want a reduction. And those reductions have to include any additional articles over the, above and beyond the budget. For us, that's not too bad, but the town side, they have four collective bargaining agreements that will likely be on the ballot in March.
Well, Goffstown will have one. You'll have your support staff contract.
This year? This coming year? Oh, I told them we didn't have any.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
You'll have your support staff contract.
Okay.
That expires in two thousand and eleven, you're right.
So, um, I guess one of the reasons we, um, should discuss this tonight, our principals are gonna be preparing their budgets over the course of the summer. They have to be in the superintendent's office by September. And if we seriously believe we can do this ten percent reduction, and I wish I could tell you that that would be it. My own personal opinion from comments made at the meeting last Tuesday night is ten percent is a starting point. So you could come in with a number that's ten percent less, and they'll still go through and they'll pick other items out and say, no, we can't, we don't want you to do this. So.
Is, is, is there any notion that a successful business makes five percent profit?
There.
No, I think part of the ten percent.
You're, you're tempting me. You're really, really tempting me. It's not.
Okay, no, I, you're right.
It's not my nature to be polit, no, no, no. It's not my nature to be politic and reasonable and PC, uh.
Would it be safe to assume that the reason why they chose ten percent as the starting range is because at the limited session, all that the public can do is increase the budget proposed by the budget committee by ten percent?
Actually.
Is this their way of trying to level fund it?
When numbers were first put out there, um, the thought was ninety-seven percent and ninety, or, and one, two budgets prepared. One at ninety percent of, ninety-seven percent of this year's level, and the other at ninety-three. And, uh, a couple people spoke up and said that that, it's impossible to ask people to prepare. Preparing one budget is enough of a job. They don't need to prepare two.
I mean, now they're taking into consideration that we have contractual obligations for increasing salaries that the voters have voted on?
They don't, they don't, they don't care.
So, can I ask which ten percent of the kids that don't wanna educate next year?
It's a good question.
Did they happen to share, do they wanna get rid of science? Do they wanna get rid of math, or just get rid of ten percent of the kids?
They, one of them actually made the statement that he would be glad to come in and help us to cut three and a half million dollars off. It would be easy.
Sure, sure. Hey, would you like to share that gentleman's name for me?
But to, to give you an idea of the mentality that I'm thinking about, that I'm talking about. I got this email today. It's from Guy Karen, a member of the budget committee. He had a couple of questions about, one on the town side, one on the school side. On the school side, he says the school's VoIP phone system is an, a line item in next year's school budget. And it was in the proposed budget, but it no longer is.
It was. It was taken out.
But it, it is being purchased with leftover money from this year's school budget, which ends June thirtieth. So Goff, aren't Goffstown taxpayers entitled to an, and this is loud, 'cause it's all in caps, immediate refund for the cost of that system on July first, when next year's budget kicks in? And if that refund is not immediately forthcoming, wouldn't taxpayers be entitled to accrued interest on their money until the school district returns those unspent monies?
A simple answer?
No.
That's a simple answer.
Bottom line budget only works sometime, apparently.
Correct. He has made several comments, as other people in that committee, that it's a bottom line budget. They will not tell us where to make the cuts. They have refused last year to offer suggestions as to get rid of this teacher, that. It's a bottom line budget, they keep saying. So you can't have your cake and eat it too.
So I.
So you're gonna say it's a bottom line budget, you can't ask that.
I don't know if this board wants to give direction to administration to try and come up with that ten percent reduction, knowing that it probably isn't going to be the final number.
I think what we need to give instruction to our administration is to come up with a responsible budget to educate our children. That is what their job is.
And actually, that's what our job is, too. Um, our job is not to please the budget committee. It is to offer the taxpayers of Goffstown a budget that will reflect the needs of our school system responsibly and not necessarily be the same as the budget committees, because they really don't understand our budget. And just those kinds of comments will show you that they don't care to either. So I, I would make the motion that we go ahead and use their suggestion, as we did last year, to start from zero and work up, come up with a responsible budget, and then we'll vote on it, look at it, and then at the end of the cycle, where everybody goes through and picks out, you'll, you know, the principals get chopped, the, everything gets chopped. So I think we need to do it in a responsible way that we normally do. That's our charge as a school board.
I think they should be, they should be aware of the ten percent request, though.
Everybody's aware of it.
Well, yeah, they should be aware.
Because.
Be aware of it, but I don't.
They've been doing this long enough. They should be aware of it.
Yeah, I don't think that's the way you do a budget.
And to put it in a little perspective.
And, and when you look at it, our budget this year is below the default budget. How can you do like another three million beyond that? That's ridiculous.
If you look at Maple Ave's budget, their general fund budget is three point eight million dollars for Maple Ave, so that's pretty much wiping out Maple Ave.
That's ridiculous. Maple Ave.
No, well, they've been good. That'll get parents out to vote.
So that's putting it in a perspective of, of what that looks like, how many teachers that is, how many support staff that is, the materials, the curriculum.
You know, the voters can make a choice. We can offer a budget and they can offer a budget, and I think in the end, the taxpayers are the ones that need to make the choice.
I agree with you. I think the taxpayers make that choice. Um, you know, we're putting forward what we feel is a fiscal council budget.
They want us to close down Maple Avenue next year, then.
And the PNC committee has its work cut out for him to educate taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Well, it's budget.
So, uh, Jimmy made.
Quite honestly, the taxpayers, and parents in particular, are gonna have to decide. All they have to do is show up and vote.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think that's asking too much of them.
So we have a motion on the floor from Jimmy for us to, could you repeat your motion to make sure I get it correct, and I have to apologize.
No, she actually made a motion. She didn't make a motion. She just made a.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm a motion.
I will be glad to make that motion. I charge the administration to create a responsible budget for the needs of our district.
Start with zero-based budgeting.
Zero-based budget and work out.
Anything wanna say?
And we'll go through the regular process that we always do and cut from there. Second.
Can I get it by Sue? Any other questions or comments?
Phil. I agree with Jimmy completely. I don't think we need a motion to do what we've done forever. But, and that's all.
No, but I think it's, it's, it's providing the direction to our administration, since there could be conflicting, uh, um, thoughts out there.
Well, plus it makes it clear that it's being done under the board's direction.
Yep. So, all in favor of the motion? One, two, three, four, five. That passes unanimously, six, zero, zero, with Hank being absent, Kent being absent. All right, I just forgot the other one. Hank, Kent.
I think that's it.
No, I have to have nine. I've got six people here.
You have seven, seven. Count yourself.
You got seven?
Goodness gracious. So all those that were six, zero, zero, or seven, zero, zero. I have to apologize. I have to apologize. I kept thinking after Kent left, we only had six members left. Uh, so that passes seven, zero, zero.
And one other thing, well, actually a couple of other things. Uh, we had talked about doing all the budget presentations on one day, a Saturday. Town is doing it on October twenty-third. Um, they would like not to do it two Saturdays in a row. So we're looking at November sixth or thirteenth to get that done, and they've requested that it not be done here, because the acoustics are terrible and we have a hard time hearing. So they suggested doing it at town hall.
Or with a microphone.
Pardon?
Or with a microphone.
Oh, well.
And that would be.
We actually could, could bring a, temporarily bring in a sound system with speakers in the back.
Well, if that, but.
So, but that's something we'll discuss.
And they're, they're correct about, if you're sitting over there, you can't hear what's going on.
It is difficult, so maybe we can find a way to accommodate that that night.
So that's to answer their questions, to go over the, our budget.
That's to present our budget and answer their questions and do our presentation.
That's the, well, everybody's, all of budget presentations in one fell swoop.
Okay.
With like, I think they asked for a couple evenings of follow-up if they have a question, right?
Follow-up, yeah, follow-up questions, yeah.
Okay, so I will put November sixth and thirteen.
And the.
Well, they, we have to pick one of those days.
Sixth or thirteenth.
So.
They're, they're looking at eight o'clock in the morning. Not my favorite people again.
Saturday, huh?
I'm, I'm available either, so.
How about you just check with the administrators to see what's the best day, and then contact, uh, Dan and have, let him know what day would be the best day
Yeah.
for all our administrators to be there.
I think nine o'clock is starting.
Monday.
Yeah, we, thank you.
Monday.
And the other, other question, um, that's been asked several times, and they say they've never gotten an answer to, is why aren't, when things go out for bid from the Goffstown School District, why isn't the information on the website? 'Cause apparently the town puts all their bid information on their website.
Well, we can look into that, mm, certainly. See if that, what, what's, what that means for us versus time and everything else, so.
I believe we could do it. We just don't, I mean, for most of what we go out to bid for is so limited in scope, for example, buses.
On four or RFP. On four or RFP.
Um, you know, it's, there's like so many companies who do it.
Both, I believe.
We just send the information to them.
We'll, we'll.
We got to tie that up in here.
They're looking for, and then they put down who's the successful.
That's a good time service.
Should we put the RFP up and then they?
In the paper.
I, hey. I don't, I look at the town website.
I know they put up the RFP. I don't know if they put up the successful bidder. I've never checked, and they did that.
I can look into it.
Yeah, we'll see what's involved.
See what they do.
'Cause really, you're looking at milk, your paper, oil, gas.
Well, like computers, like when we went out for the computer week, they wanna know who teacher the test bits from and who would, why did you pick them?
Primary, those before they've gotten. Well, we, we were limited on our, because we actually have a lease with them and they were buying it back.
I know. Right.
So it provided some limitations, but we did ultimately save the taxpayers money by doing this.
No. Don't wanna hear stuff like that. And, and somebody asks questions.
You don't wanna hear that we saved money? Is that what you're saying?
But they don't wanna hear your real reasons why.
Oh.
Um, JV baseball field. They wanna know what's being done there and why. They were talking to the wrong person.
With JV baseball?
At the high school. Is there a JV baseball field?
Yep, there's, I think it's a practice, back here. It's a practice field out in the back of the high school.
Yeah. Is there irrigation being done there, or the?
We're doing some work on the sprinkler heads and some, we're realigning them because we're watering the dirt. So we ha, we do have the company coming out to realign them, so that we're watering the grass as opposed to the dirt.
Okay, I'll email it off to them.
But any other improvements to the field have been done in kind donations besides that this year?
But. Yeah, or, or our regular irrigate, I mean, we do regular, we have to aerate our fields. We see them. There's regular maintenance that we do for all of our fields.
So we're realigning the sprinklers. Got it.
Yeah, and it's your standard, you know, maintenance when it comes to, um, fertilizer, things like that.
I guess if they have further questions, they can send them to me. I just, like, I don't know, did they see something specific happening that we're just doing regular maintenance that we would do normally?
And even a lot of that's been in kind donations. Well, Sue finished writing that to make sure there's nothing else she needs to add to us.
No, that's it, thankfully.
That's it. Anybody else have any questions or comments they wanna share this time on the budget committee update? All right, we will jump right, um, do you have any teacher track changes?
I don't, 'cause they didn't give them to me.
Okay, so we'll have that for, uh, August.
So, yeah, I think we had one teacher and one student teacher, but I can bring them in August.
Okay. Any other business to legally bring in front of the board from a board member? Seeing none. I actually need to accept a motion pursuant to RSA ninety-one A three two C to go into non-public to discuss two different personnel matters. Seconded by Jenny, seconded by, um, Jen, sorry, I gotta do a head roll call. Make sure that, yes, yes. Sue, yes?
Yes, yes.
Diane, yes?
Yes.
Yes, yes. All right, we're officially non-public.